Good evening, everyone. As my colleague Councilmember Mills always says, it's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. Thank you for joining us this evening. I now call our, I'm sorry, our October 1st Mayor and City Council Work Session to order at 6:00 P. M. Today, we have seven items to review and discuss. First, on our agenda, we have a bid recommendation from our Budget and Personnel Services Department regarding employee insurance. And here with us today is Deputy Director Lisa Woods to provide us with more context. You now have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, excuse me, Mayor Sidnor and City Councilmembers. Before you is a memo dated September 16th, 2025, recommending your approval of the contract for the Employee Health Dental and Vision Insurance Contract for the Service Year November 1st, 2025 through October 31st, 2026. Cigna offered an updated renewal rate of 4.3% above our current rate. There were no other rating rates quoted due to the city receiving a considerably low renewal rate from Cigna. The current industry rate for the employers with an employee count of 100 to 200 employees is between 7.3 and 9.2. Since Cigna has offered a competitive renewal rate, other insurance companies declined to quote. Therefore, we believe that Cigna is the most adventurous, adventurous choice for the city without sacrificing any benefits for the city and for the city employees, excuse me. The funding is available when FY26 adopted a general operating budget under the Employee Insurance Section of the Budget, which is item line number 53405. I respectfully request approval of award to the recommended bidder, bidder Cigna, which is our current carrier for the Health Dental and Vision Insurance for November 1st, 2025 through October 31st, 2026. I will be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Deputy Director Woods. Are there any questions or comments from the council on this bid recommendation? I see Councilmember Simmons, your hand. Please feel free to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Woods. I sent in some queries, but I think I know it was a short timetable, but I wanted to ask. I saw this is one-year renewal on our previous contract was three years. Obviously, the rate is very advantageous. Was there any conversation around saying, hey, can we sort of make that another three years?
Yes, yes, I did go out to our group. It's the NFV group that does that, that does our bidding for us. I did ask if they could do that. Cigna come back and said they don't do this normally. They usually just do it at one time. And the reason why they did it for three years prior is because our rates, our, our, the ratio that we had the last three years was lower than it was this year. So they were able to lower our rate instead of going, instead of us going out to bid. We did go out to bid with them, but the other bidders decided they didn't want to quote us. So I tried, they just wouldn't do it for another three years, or they wouldn't extend it another year as well, because I tried for that as well.
Gotcha. And so going forward, probably this will be renewed on a year-to-year basis as opposed to?
Yeah, it's renewed on, yeah, it's renewed on a year-to-year basis. We go out, we send a census out to our NFAP group, and then they send it out to different insurance companies, and they'll, they'll set out bids for us.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments? I do have a question myself, Deputy Director. With this insurance policy, and I'm not sure, I think you said this is just a renewal. It won't change anything? This will be the same thing that we've had today?
Yes, everything is the same, except the prices just went up a little bit. That's all, but everything stays exactly the same.
Okay. Um, question, would it, is it, is it an additional cost if, I know that some insurance companies include coverage on gym memberships? To allow people to continue to be healthy regularly. I didn't remember seeing this in this, in this, in ours or in the cities. Um, is that an additional cost, or is that something that can be included? Her request, just wanted to understand.
Um, I can check for you. I don't, I don't believe that's in our policy at the present time, but I'll go back to our group and ask and see if that can be added and what kind of cost it would be, okay?
Thank you. That was actually a recommendation, so I appreciate that. That's my question. I don't see any additional questions or comments from the council regarding this bid recommendation. And I don't see if, does anyone have hesitation about adding this to our October 15 meeting? I don't see any. Okay, great. Thank you. So with no hesitation in adding this, no questions and no additional comments, this bid recommendation will be placed on the agenda for with, for possible action during our virtual regular mayor and council meeting on October 15th at 6:00 P. M. Thank you so much, Deputy Director.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you.
You as well. All right, moving to agenda item number three. We have a bid recommendation from our Information and Technology Department regarding a furniture request from the Laurel Police Department. Here with us today, we have Director James Cornwall Shields provide us with more details. You now have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Clark, and good evening, Mayor Sidnor and Councilmembers. Before you is a bid recommendation for the replacement of our police dispatch furniture. Modern and functional dispatch furniture is a critical piece in ensuring that our police department's 24/7 operations continue to run smoothly. The current furniture no longer has replacement parts available, and several pieces are failing, including the sit-to-stand adjustable heights and a few other pieces. The dispatch furniture that we currently have and that is planned to be deployed consists of four corner desks that seat four dispatchers, as long, as well as several cabinets and surfaces in between them, that house a total of 12 computers and associated peripherals, 18 monitors, three police radios and microphones, four telephones, a multifunction printer, as well as a wide variety of office supplies. These, these desks are designed to ease shift transitions and help reduce dispatcher fatigue, prevent strain, and keep dispatchers comfortable on their long shifts. They are in operation 24/7, so they should, they shift, shift between users, and they are almost always in use. The new, the new stations will have personal comfort settings such as programmable heights, so that they can sit down and automatically set the desk to their preferred height, as well as cooling and lighting that is configurable per dispatcher. And that's really the feature set that's available throughout all of the offerings that we looked at. Now, we solicited quotes from established dispatch furniture vendors on state and county contracts, and the best quote that we got was from Russ Basset Corporation of Whittier, California. They are a state of Maryland master contractor, and they, they came in at 103,747 and 80 cents. That includes removal of the existing furniture, installation of the new furniture, and a 10-year warranty on the entire, and the entire build-out. So it is our recommendation that the purchase of this equipment be approved in the amount of $103,747.80 to Russ Basset Corporation, with the contingency of an additional $10,000 for a total of $113,747.80, just in case there are any unexpected additions that are needed. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Cornwall Shield. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this bid recommendation? I don't see any. Hands raised. You did a good job. Oh, you were almost there. I see a question from Councilmember Mills. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, I just was gonna say, it's not a question, but gotta be some special furniture to cost that much money.
Absolutely.
Can you, can I, like, can you just give a more detailed description of that furniture again for?
Sure. So I'm not sure if it was included in your packet, but there was a full parts list and build-out that I submitted with the, with the proposal. So it includes adjustable height desks, four adjustable height desks, mounting for all of those 18 monitors to keep the, to keep the desktops clear. It includes console panels that mount to the back of the desk that allow easy access to various ports, ethernet ports, USB ports, et cetera, for attaching additional equipment, controls for all of the height and temperature and lighting, cooling and housing for all of the computers that are involved. Each of those stations has a computer for radio monitoring and, and security camera monitoring, as well as the actual dispatch operations. There is additionally, all of these pieces are custom-built to fit the space, so it's not like it's a prefab thing you can pick up at IKEA, which I would love. That would be a great price tag. Additionally, all of the wiring and, and power and all of that is integrated into the furniture, and in our case, it routes up to the ceiling, so there are posts from this furniture where all of that wiring goes through the, through the back of the furniture and then up through posts that go up to the ceiling, where it then routes to our server room, battery backups, radio tower, et cetera.
One, one question, Derek, was there, like, I know you said that this, this company, excuse me, was, or is, is, is on the list of vendors. Nothing, nothing more closer to home?
So we did look at two other companies, but there's, one of which is based in, I believe, Tyson's Corner, but they came in about $13,000 more expensive for the equivalent product.
So do you, do you mean, like, can you, can you go back to these companies, like a, like a form of negotiation to, you know, like, you know, hey, this, this company offered less, or, you know, we're trying to work with you, you know, if there was like a, if there was a company that was in the city of Laurel, you know what I mean? Like, we really want to work with you, but I guess, I guess you can't.
Not under our procurement procedures. Yeah, they're, they're blind bids there.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Any additional questions or comments? I have, um, one question. I was looking, just double-checking, I saw if it lasts about 10 years, it'd be about $10,000 a year, maybe 15 years, about $6,000, $7,000 a year, but does it include chairs, new chairs, or would that be an additional cost?
Chairs are additional. These, actually Dispatch just got new chairs recently, but chairs would be an additional cost. One of the things that these companies often include is new flooring, but this is, we've already approved a project for new flooring that's going to be coordinated alongside this installation. But yeah, the, the other comfort pieces like chairs and, and flooring and that kind of thing are often included as additional pieces, but they're not in this case.
Okay, and just on one additional part B of the question. Um, I remember when I did a layout for Commerce, a lot of agencies are moving towards desks that are interchangeable. So let's say, like, the stool may be able to push up under the desk, so if someone wants to sit there, you have more space to walk around. Is that, is that what this desk, is it multifaceted where it goes up and down, but it also has like a drawer next to it that can pull out and double as a stool, or is it just a desk? Because we didn't, we didn't get that extra detail, not that I'm.
Okay, I, I don't believe that there are any, like, reconfigurable seating options, that kind of thing.
Okay, all right. No, just wondered if it could double as something, that's kind of what we've all moved to, especially within administrations. So I just wanted to check since I visually am trying to understand. Thank you so much. I see Councilmember Mills has an additional question. Please feel free to proceed.
Yeah, just a quick question, Madam President. I was just wondering, is it, is this something that, that's really needed this year? Or are we, are we focusing on, you know, like, next year, the year after? I know you said that there were parts that was, you know, breaking down on, on, on these.
So this, this project has actually been in progress since a year and a half ago. We started looking at companies for replacement because these were end-of-life. To President Clark's statement about the 10-year, the warranty is 10 years, the expected lifetime is 10 years. Usually, we expect them to actually last 14 to 15. And as far as the, being the time to?
If, if, if the, if the warranty is, if the life expectancy is 10 years and the warranty is 10 years, do we, do we, maybe something could go wrong with the?
It's, it's entirely possible that something could go wrong in, in that last five years. You know how warranties are. Things always break the day after the warranty expires. But our current, our current desks were also warranted for 10 years, and they didn't start having any part failures until year 13. So we would start looking at replacement at year 10, but, you know, we're, we're gonna do what's best for, for the city financially in that, in that process. As far as whether this should be done this year, again, we did allocate money for this in the, I believe it was the FY24 CIP. Unfortunately, that was based on an inaccurate estimate at first. It was based on an estimate for two desks rather than all four. So there is additional funding that needed to be authorized this month to make this happen, and that's kind of what we've been waiting on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. I also see that you have your hand raised. Please feel free to proceed.
I do. I want to thank James for taking this on, but this is really a critical, I'm trying to turn the camera on, sorry. This is really a critical function for us to be able to get in there. I don't think it's quite understood that these desks are used 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. When you look at these warranties, they don't contemplate that type of service on most equipment. I would also note that just a number of years ago, we re-outfitted most of the desks in the station, except for dispatch, for free. We, we found somebody that was donating the furniture, and we did it. So we've saved a lot of costs over the couple, past couple of years. For instance, my furniture is all been picked up through the company that was going out of business, as have all the sergeants and commanders. So I think this is really critical for us to demonstrate to our dispatchers that we do care about them, we care about the functionality of the job they do. And I, I really, this furniture is beyond, James, you were nice, it's really gotten beyond end-of-life, and we need, we need to get it updated. And like James said, hopefully, we get 14 years out of it. 10 is pretty good as well. I think most of us would be happy to get 10 years of use out of a piece of equipment for the most part. So, but I do want to thank James for, it's been yeoman's work getting this completed for us, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hamel. You made me think of one additional question, which is very small. Is there an option to purchase an extended, extended warranty to Councilmember Mills? You know, like, sometimes I do it when I'm able to buy, like, an extra two years for the desks.
I will need to double-check on that. I do not know the answer to that.
Okay, but you did say that it, it did start wearing out around year 13, so that'd be like three extra years with fingers crossed, right? But just, I just wondered that factor. All right, that's, that's all that I have. I don't see any additional questions or comments from the council regarding this bid recommendation. So does anyone have any hesitation? I'm moving it forward to our virtual regular meeting. I don't see any. So hearing no additional questions or comment from the council, and with no objections, that I see this bid recommendation will be placed on the agenda for possible action during our regular, virtual regular mayor and council meeting on October 15th at 6:00 P. M. Thank you so much, Director Cornwall Shield and Chief Russell Hamel for your time. Okay, moving to agenda item number four, we have ordinance number 2046, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council, City Council of Laurel, Maryland to modify the operation of the City of Laurel Employees Retirement Plan to document a cost of living adjustment for retirees of January 1, 1994 to December 31st, 2014. And here to provide more context, we have Director Michelle Saylor and the city's actuary attorney, Markeia, Marika Ostendorf. I was close. All right, thank you. You both now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Sidnor and Councilmembers. As Madam President read into the record, you have two separate ordinances. As you know, we have two separate retirement plans, one for the sworn police officers and one for all the other full-time employees. So it always requires two separate ordinances based on those plans. And through the FY2026 budget process, $150,000 was funded as an additional city contribution to the pension fund as part of a five-year funding plan provided by the actuaries for the full cost of a COLA, which must be borne by the city and not by the retirement plan. Included in each ordinance is a census of the affected retirees and the rate of increase for the two groups. And there are the two ranges of January 1, 1994, to December 31st of 2004, and then January 1st of 2005 to December 31st, 2014. So we have with us Marika Ostendorf, the attorney for the pension plan. She's been working with city solicitor Stephanie Anderson on determining the best way forward to specifically document this COLA for these specific retirees at these specific rates. So I will turn it over to Marika at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. My name is Marika Ostendorf, and I serve as the city's pension attorney. So thank you for giving me, number one, the opportunity to work with you for many years, and two, thank you for giving me time tonight to talk about these two ordinances. And I'm just combining them as two ordinances because they're mirror ordinances, one for the police plan and one for the employees' plan. And the purpose of the ordinances are twofold. One, they're to document that a COLA was approved and for whom and for how much. And then, secondly, to document that the, the funding of the COLA was approved, and it's an estimated five-year funding cost of approximately $807,000. So there were two parts that we wanted to have memorialized, one, the terms of the COLA, and two, the funding of the COLA. And Michelle went over big picture, the terms of the COLA, and the whereas clauses explain the funding of the COLA. So I, I, I'm happy to go through this in more detail. I'm sensitive to your time. Would you like me to do more detail? Would you like me to answer specific questions? Please tell me how I can help you.
Thank you. So I think that, I just wanted to double-check to make sure for protocol purposes. If anyone has questions regarding ordinance 2046 first would be great, so we could probably separate it, and then we can go to 2047. So if anyone has, does, do the council members have any questions or comments regarding ordinance number 2046 first, focused on the City of Laurel Employees Retirement Plan? Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And again, I know we had a shortened time schedule. There was a couple queries I had sent in prior, but I know we were on a compressed time schedule before this meeting. Some big-picture questions. I know you mentioned, obviously, as we alluded to, there's the two separate ordinances for the two separate plans. Are we to understand that that $807,000 over the five years, does that cover both plans? Because that number appears in both ordinances. So are you really doing 1.6 million, or are we doing 800,000?
So it would be one, it would be both plans combined is $807,000.
Gotcha. Okay, so those numbers are maybe just repeated in both places, but they cover both in total. It's the 807, okay.
Yes.
Um, some, some big-picture questions just from stuff I sent in prior. In terms of the determination to sort of, okay, who gets a COLA, who doesn't get a COLA, I believe this is set up like 94 to 2014. Was there a driver behind choosing that date range, and you know, what about those who may be retired after that date?
So the plan documents, and both plans are basically mirror plans, but the plan documents give the mayor and the city council the discretion to award a COLA and to decide who would be receiving the COLA. And the mayor looked at the population and decided that the older retirees would, would benefit more from the COLA because they got a benefit that was given 30 years ago. So it was completely discretionary by the mayor. That's, that's how it was decided. And it was similar to a proposal that was considered in 2018, which was not formalized. In the 2018 proposal, there was a similar adjustment, which was skewed more so toward the older retirees. So it started at 2%, and then it went up to 6%, but it did not do the retirees that had retired within the past number of years. It was intentionally skewed toward the older retirees. So the short answer is it was, it was completely discretionary.
Gotcha. And how about another sort of just general question from sort of a pension law, retirement law? You know, applying or creating or approving sort of a retirement benefit outside the retirement plan and the retirement plan document itself? What are some observations you can give us on that piece?
That's a great question. So you have your retirement plan, and if you think about, here's an example. Your plan document is a contract, so it's like 60 pages long, and the terms of the contract spell out the plan. So if you want to change the terms, you can do an amendment to the plan itself. You can amend it through a board resolution as well, or, or in your case, an ordinance. All of those will amend the retirement plan. In this specific situation, we were proposing an ordinance for two reasons. One, the literal language of the plan document where it talks about the COLA specifically says the employer can grant a COLA which will become effective upon resolution adopted by the employer. So we reviewed that. We thought it meant an ordinance. That's, that's point one. And then point two, we wanted to have the ordinance address two things. One, the terms of the COLA, and two, the commitment to fund the COLA. We can certainly go back if the council feels more comfortable. We can put an amendment to the plan. The amendment to the plan will only address the terms of the COLA, not the funding of the COLA. We can certainly do that if you would like us to do that. I think it's legally defensible to have it in the ordinance because it's both parts in one document, but we can do the ordinance and an amendment if you'd like. There have been other situations in the past where we have changed certain provisions of the plan, and we haven't done something in the plan itself. Like, for instance, when you determine the funding of the plan, you have to decide what is the actual interest rate that you will use. And when, in the past, it used to be 7.5%, and you did an ordinance a couple of years ago and reduced it to 7%, the interest rate is approved through an ordinance. It's not in the plan. In, in the past, you've also done thirteenth, let me back up a minute. So the COLA can be done by giving everybody a thirteenth check or by giving a cost of living adjustment, which adjusts the monthly check. And you've done two different situations where you've given a thirteenth check. When you do a thirteenth check, you don't typically amend the plan. You do it through an ordinance. So since an option to do a thirteenth check or a COLA is done through an ordinance, we just thought it made more sense when you consider everything to do it through an ordinance. But we certainly could do an ordinance and an amendment. The amendment would just deal with the terms, not the funding.
Yes, that makes sense. And, and that's sort of where I was getting at with, you know, when it's discretionary, year-to-year decision, you just do an ordinance outside the plan. Yeah, I think the intent here is to make this a sort of more, more permanent, you know, guarantee to those that have retired within those years to have a permanent step up. You know, I leaned towards the, what you suggested of having an amendment to the plan to have it reflected within the retirement plan document itself. As you alluded to, the funding still would need to come to ordinance route. Obviously, I don't speak for the council, I just speak for myself, but, um, but, you know, that was sort of my thought that this should happen through amendment to the plan. Related to that, I don't know if the Board of Trustees over the plan may have opined on, on this either way. They may not have, but I just figured it'd be a question we'd ask.
Sure, that's another great question. So the situation and the involvement of the Board of Trustees is evolving. So when the plans were set up in the early nineties, a charter was adopted. And the charter specifically says that the Board of Trustees is responsible for managing the overall investment of the plan assets. And over the years, sometimes the Board of Trustees has done more, but in recent years, we've been intentional and we've done exactly what the ordinance requires, which is limit the Board of Trustees authority to reviewing the investment performance and the investment decisions. And we've got city council attorney, we've got Stephanie Anderson helping us because it might be time, your plans are thirty years old, to refresh the charter and maybe give additional authority to the retirement committee, but that, that is your decision, not mine. So that, that literally that's why they didn't opine on this because they haven't opined when the mayor has considered doing a thirteenth check in the past. That is completely up to the mayor and the city council and not the decision of the retirement committee.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I know, I mean, I've been on some boards too with, you know, foundations overseeing the investment selection and things along those matters. You know, and that certainly might be something up to consideration. And then I imagine that, you know, the mayor would be able to evaluate that further. Um, and my, my last question, or actually more of just a, something to, to mention, um, you know, to, to my reading in terms of the preamble to these, the ordinances, the wherethis is the, um, to clarify for the record that, you know, although council looked at this as part of the budget in terms of the allocation as part of the budget, the call itself is being approved for this process. It's not that it was previously approved. And we're reapproving it. It's more that we approve provision within the budget process. And now we're actually looking at the specifics of the plan in, in, in our conversations here this month. So I mostly just mentioned that for the record, not so much as a question. But thank you very much. I really appreciate your explanations. They're very, very helpful.
Really, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. I see Councilmember, uh, Jeffrey Mills' hand. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I was just, uh, wondering about the, um, when we're talking COLA, um, and the, the rise of inflation. But to consider this administration, the federal, uh, Trump administration's, uh, focus on tariffs. Um, you know, the, that's, it's said that these countries' goods are, um, are being charged a extra, but it's, in actuality, it's us who are being charged extra.
Mm-hmm.
So I was just wondering, do you all, um, the, with, you know, the mayor's administration, maybe you, you can give a little insight on that? If, if that, because we're talking four years, uh, now, um, you know, of this administration, are the tariffs also being included? Because even though we're raising for inflation, but now we have another form of inflation also to consider.
Right.
So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
So let me, let me comment on that. I think that's an excellent point. So the way that your retirement plan works, and I'm just going to focus on the employees. When an, when one of your employees retires, and it's usually at sixty-five or fifty-five with a, a many years of service, then we give them a monthly benefit for the rest of their life. And the monthly benefit does not change. It does not increase. It stays the same unless you give a cost of living adjustment. Okay, so when you're agreeing under the terms of the plan as they exist today, you have agreed to give everybody a monthly benefit for as long as they live. Okay, and the IRS thinks we're going to live to one hundred and fourteen. So that's how we calculate how much money you have to have set aside to pay everybody. And you have the actuary that comes in and does computations and then tells the mayor and the city that in order to pay the promised benefit, you have to put so many dollars into the plan this year. And that's what you've been doing all along. So just hold that thought. That's the regular contribution. And then there's been these separate discussions about can we afford to give more dollars to the retirees in pay status? And the financial obligation to give more dollars falls back on the city, just like what you're saying. So the financial obligation would be in addition to the commitment you've already made. And that's why we had the actuary, we had the five-year proposal spelled out in all of the disclosure information that we're providing because you're paying the existing, the regular cost for everybody's benefit until they are no longer with us. And then you're paying a cost of living adjustment on top of that. And you asked if we also would do an additional cost of living on top of that for the tariffs, which is an excellent question. And it all comes back to the Laurel finances because every time you give a cost of living or a thirteenth check or a, an adjustment for the tariffs, it's another responsibility that you, you impose on the plan and you impose on the city. So the, it's an excellent question to ask, can there be an accommodation for the tariffs? When the cost of living was determined, I do not believe the terrorists were factored into it. So no, sir. If that's something you want to consider, that, the, I'm sure the, I'm sure the actuary could look at that and come out, come back, come report back with some cost estimates. It's just how much can the city afford to pay? Because remember, our plan is our contract. So we've committed to pay things. And that's why we're taking baby steps with the cost of living adjustment that will be funded over five years. Is that, is that sufficient, sir?
You're on mute, Councilmember Mills?
Sorry about that. Um, so the, um, yes, to answer your question. Um, but so would it be feasible for maybe, uh, retirees, um, or employees to add, like, if you, if you, let's just say, for instance, if you know that a Republican administration would, um, shoot for, you know, shoot for tariffs, right? So during these four years, would they, should they be perhaps maybe being proactive to save more? Maybe, you know, adding a quarter, a dollar, you know, more to, to, to get to that point of retirement? Be able to have those extra funds? Or, you know, I'm just trying to think of ways as far as, you know, not falling back on the city? Does it fall back on the city, you know, to be it for us to add more into that retirement? So.
That's a great question. So you have multiple retirement plans and these, the retirement plan that we're discussing right now is the plan where employees make certain statute, certain required contributions to the plan. I believe it's four and a half percent if they're employees and it's about eight percent and change if they're police. So they are required to contribute those amounts into this plan. It's a, what's called a defined benefit plan. Because think of it as a bucket of money. So they put money in and you put money in. And if everybody lives, I'm just going to use a crazy number. If everybody lives until one hundred and fifty, the plan is going to be more expensive than we anticipated because we think everyone's going to live to one hundred and fourteen. That's what the IRS tells us. Okay? That's one plan. And the employees cannot put more money away because they, because it's a tough time right now and they want to save for retirement. Not in that plan. But you have other plans. You have a four fifty-seven B plan. You, you may have a four three B plan. Employees can then in those plans put away more dollars. And yes, they should maximize as much as they can because candidly, we don't have employees saving enough for retirement. And what, the benefit that you're offering in the plan we're talking about tonight with the cost of living adjustment is an excellent benefit. And most employees do not have access to that benefit because they don't work for the city. But yes, anything you can do to encourage employees to save is, is huge.
Well, I, I think that, um, I think it's like more so like a, like a, the term damned if you do, damned if you don't because it's like, well, I'd rather have it now.
Yeah.
That's how, that's
Yeah.
That's the reason why you don't have as much money in, in that pot that you're saying.
Right.
And a lot of them don't see themselves as living to a hundred four, fourteen years. You know, so they're like, well, hey, I'd rather have it now, you know, um, but, you know.
You're exactly right. Employees, uh, are not used, having the discipline to save for retirement. So we're heading toward a situation where older employees don't have enough money saved for retirement, so they can't retire. And at the same time, they can't do the job. And that's a huge problem.
It's major, it's going to be a major problem.
Yeah, it, yeah.
Thank God for Walmart.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Mills. I see that Mayor Sidnor, your hand is up. Please feel free to proceed. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, um, I want to yell first. I, I got something to say, but Director Saylor had her hand up as well, so she might, uh, have something to say before me. I might not have to say what I need to say. So, Sally, you want to go ahead and repeat what you got? Well, I'll repeat, but you want to hit your hand raised. You want to go ahead and say what you had to say?
Thank you, Mayor, but, um, Marika covered that when she, um, talked about the four fifty-seven and the other opportunities that we offer to employees, uh, for personal savings and retirement savings outside of the pension plan. That's all I was going to offer. Thank you.
But thank you, Director Saylor. First of all, I want to thank you again, Director Saylor and Ms. Marika. Uh, this process has been going on ever since I became the mayor and I started working on, um, retirees. Retirees have been saying they want to cost a living since I was a council member. And we're always trying to find a way to do that, a thirteenth check. And we've just been going back and forth. And then we started investigating more that the mayor and city council has the power to do that. And that's what we're doing. That's what we came up with over a year and a half to come up this plan. Like I said, this plan was a, a plan that came up in two thousand eighteen that wasn't supposed to be put into action. It wasn't. I don't know why. But we feel that these individuals who retired thirty years ago, uh, the cost of living wouldn't weigh up. And we understand that, you know, yeah, right, we're not responsible to give them a cost of living, but if we can, we will. That's what I want to do. That's part of the thing I want to do as the mayor when I came in office. And I think some of the council members agreed to that, to some, um, staff that they want to do that as well. And this is the best plan we can come up with. It's, um, a five-year plan. Um, we talked about it extensively in our budget meeting in May, and we talked about this will cost each year. And this money will not hurt us, in my opinion, in the next three years, at least of twenty twenty-seven. We know that that things that we can cut, because this is discretionary money. I know in the mayor's account, there's at least a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in discretionary money that we, uh, help organizations out, nonprofit organizations out, giving things away to help people. If we have to cut funding from that budget, we'll do that budget first to make sure that, you know, that these retirees be rewarded for their service they've done for the city. So I think this is something that is important. I think it's important that we, uh, approve this. And I think it's, uh, we already approved it already on paper. And now it's just coming back in fact and saying, hey, in case, you know, this council is not here until twenty thirty, the council come behind us, know this is happening. So, uh, I think, you know, I mean, questions are valid. I mean, but I think it's something, I think it's, I don't think they're really needed because we talked about this extensively during the budget session and we have the funding to cover it. If we didn't have the funding to cover it, I wouldn't have brought it up to the administration and we wouldn't have talked about it at the budget session. But this is something that's important to, um, to our retirees. I think we'd be in a yeoman's job, looking at our retirees, retired thirty years ago, but giving their service to the City of Laurel. And this is for the police and also for non, um, police officers as well. So I really appreciate council just support this. I mean, you already said yes to it. I can't see how you can say no to it tonight, you know, in the work session, going to vote on it because you already voted on it. So I just wanted to put that out and thank, uh, Ms. Marika and, uh, Director Saylor and her team. Because we've been researching this for a while and this is how we came, but this was the best formula. We looked at the retirees who retired a long time ago, and thirty years ago. So I really appreciate it, council. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Ms. Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. I see Councilmember Simmons. Your hand is up as well. Feel free to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And, um, just to clarify a couple of points. I, I think it is helpful to have the conversation you are having, we're having here today. Um, although it was a budget line back in May, it wasn't one that we really went in deep. And, um, so it is helpful to have this conversation and really good to have the expert here as well to be able to give us some of the mechanics of how this works. I, I think, um, you know, we'd all be aware that even though we might approve a budget, for instance, we have the furniture for the Laurel Police Department. We still go through the bid process and approval by council. That's a necessary and important step in the process. But one question I realized I accidentally skipped over from my list as we were talking earlier was, um, to the degree, you know, if we're looking for a permanent fix and really a help, you know, to that goal to retirees, I, um, I wonder if the idea of, uh, you know, a, a newitization of a defined benefit, um, by retirees at the time of benefit, uh, at the time of retirement is something that's been explored too, because then we could sort of transfer that risk into an annuity that had like an inflation rider. And then that sort of is off the, the plate, uh, of the city. Um, and also then also solves the problem of being able to give the retiree that sort of, um, perpetually increasing, uh, amount. Um, Ms. Ostendorf, I don't know if that's something that may have been explored, if that's something feasible or, or worth exploring in your mind or just isn't really possible for that type of instrument to be used.
So it, it hasn't been explored. I don't know if that, what, so what you're talking about is a single premium annuity, which would pay the retiree the monthly benefit over their life. And then included in that single premium annuity would be some component which would adjust the monthly amount for some infle-inflation factor. So I, we could look into it. I'm not sure if it's practical because the cost of a single premium annuity, what, so what that means for everyone, all the other council people. We would go to the market and we would say to the insurance companies that we are going to buy an employee who is sixty-five, a, a, we're going, a monthly payment. We're going to buy an insurance contract which will pay a monthly payment for the rest of this person's life and include an insurance, an increase for cost of living adjustments. That's going to be pricey because they're going to assume that that person lives to be one hundred and fourteen. And one of the things that you do with your retirement plan is you have the money set aside in a trust that the city of, that, that is separate from the City of Laurel's operating budget. And you get the benefit if participants do not live until one hundred and fourteen. That's an actual gain for you and your plan. If you want to instead take the money, take a portion of your trust and use it to buy a single premium annuity on an individual basis, there's not a lot of market for that because who knows what the inflationary factors will be down the road. And I don't know that you're going to get good economies of scale because you're doing it on, for one participant at a time.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking it could be an option at the date of retirement. A retiree could say, hey, I either take this sort of steady state payment, uh, the monthly amount based on what the calculation is. Um, or I could take the present value of my defined benefit and roll that into a single premium annuity with an inflation rider that will let me, you know, ride it out. Just an idea. I was mostly curious if it's something that had been explored because it seems to me it maybe serves uh, two birds with one stone in the sense that we have that hedge against the purchasing power of the annuity over the, the life, the remaining life of the retiree. So, but that was helpful to sort of hear some of your, your thoughts on that. I mean, I know those types of instruments do exist out there. I just don't know to the degree they might exist in an institutional setting.
So what you're talking, and I can look into this, but what you're talking about is changing the distribution options when somebody retires. So right now, somebody retires and they get a monthly payment and a lump sum is not an option. And you want to give them a lump sum, which would be allowed under the tax law. But then you want to require them to take the lump sum and move it to an insurance company.
Well, no, uh, not exactly. But what it is, is more of a, hey, you have an option. You can take the city's flat payment for the rest of your retirement or you can take the present value of what you're due, if you will. And you can buy an annuity that's going to increase it with, uh, inflation over time based on the annuity contract. So uh, mostly I just wanted a quick comment and rather than exploring that in total. Um, but it was just a thought I had. And since you were with us, I thought I'd ask you that question because it's been on my mind for a bit. One last one and then, uh, uh, thank you. I appreciate the indulgence of the council president. Um, in your opinion, would amending the retirement plan versus, uh, making this type of permanent change outside the retirement plan document itself? How does that affect sort of the, the legal liability as well as the sort of the federal government uh, underwriting of the retirement plans, um, you know, in terms? You know, in terms of failure enough to whatever happened, but I know there's that legal body that sort of guarantees a certain payment. Does it change it being outside the plan versus inside the plan, in your opinion?
So because you're a governmental entity, you don't get any protections from the pension benefit guarantee corporation. You have to comply with the Internal Revenue Code requirements. And the Internal Revenue Code says you have to have a definitely determinable benefit. So if we're changing the benefit in the plan, we need to change the benefit somewhere. And I think you're legally defensible having it in an ordinance. But there is no issue if you want us to also do an amendment. We would be taking the language from the ordinance, and I would be putting it into a plan amendment template. It's the same language.
Yep, okay, great. Thank you very much. No, that was a good clarification. The PBGC is not applicable to government entities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Mayor Sidnor, did you still want to speak? I saw your hand up, but okay. Um I have one brief question and then one big picture recommendation. My question, just based off the fact, I remember not as a council member coming to the meetings. And I believe former council member DeWalt mentioned many times about the COLA. I know that this was something, as Mayor Sidnor said, has been discussed for quite some time, and is very important to everyone. Um so thank you, you know, to the administration for taking a look at this and trying to figure out how we can make it happen first and foremost for our older retirees, because it can be challenging for them to be able to sustain, especially in times like this. But I would like to know how competitive, even with these adjustments, would our COLA be in comparison to other municipalities, if you're aware?
It's hard to evaluate COLAs individually because you have to look at the total plan. So somebody else may have a a more robust COLA, but the benefit itself is smaller. Your plan provides a very strong benefit, and it requires a reasonable amount from the employees. So I think overall, I think it's a very good benefit, and I think it's a good benefit for the cost for Laurel and the cost for the employees. I don't think we can say that it's the best COLA out there, because sometimes the best COLAs out there are with plans that are more modest in benefits, and they make it up through other bells and whistles.
Yes, that makes sense. I know sometimes they they tend to be aggressive or use stocks and things like that. I've done that. It's been tragic. But, okay, and just my one big picture, I know that this is a great first step. I would like to see if we're able to explore possibly rolling this into individuals who are not just our older retirees. But present day, so that we can consider, I hear a lot making our jobs more competitive or the benefits more competitive. I know we have really great ones compared to other people. But that's just something that I wanted to put out there while everyone is looking at it on an ongoing basis. So thank you so much for answering that question. Mayor Sidnor, feel free to proceed.
Yeah, I just want to say we're not be rolling it out past two thousand. The scale we have right now, nineteen ninety-four into two thousand fifteen, that's the population we targeting because we do a yearly COLA. It's gonna cost us a lot of money, and that's why the administration and its financial team came up with this plan right here. And so maybe, you know, five years now, two years from now, you'll go back and you know, but right now, that's the oldest population that we want to do right now. So we just want to stick with this population the dates of the year that's retired, starting nineteen ninety-four to two thousand fifteen. Just want to put that out there.
Thank you for your input, Mayor Sidnor. All right, are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see any. Thank you so much for answering all of those questions, Ms. Ostendorf. Is it Ostendorf? I want to make sure I say it. Ostendorf, okay. I'm like, I gotta get this right.
Like paprika.
That's clever. Thank you for answering those questions for ordinance number two zero four six. I don't see any additional questions regarding that or any hesitation on adding this to the agenda. So hearing no additional questions, comments, or objections from the council regarding ordinance number two zero four six. It will be placed on the October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and council meeting for our first public public hearing. Now, in that discussion, we also kind of touched on agenda item number five, which is ordinance number two zero four seven, but this one is an ordinance that's focused um to modify the operation of the City of Laurel Police Department Retirement Plan to document the cost of living adjustment for retirees of January one, nineteen ninety-four to December thirty-first, twenty fourteen. Just wanted to double check Director Michelle Saylor and Ms. Marika Ostendorf. Is there any additional information that you would like to share with us that maybe we didn't cover in our first conversation in regards to this ordinance?
It's it's a mirror ordinance because they're mirror plans.
Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure we say it for the record. And I wanted to know if there were any additional questions specifically regarding ordinance number two zero four seven. I see Councilmember Mills, I'm sorry, Councilmember Simmons' hand up. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just wanted to mention again, if the administration teams it useful to clarify within the ordinance that the numbers being approved are for both. I know we've broken it up into two ordinances. But and but for clarity, it might be helpful to say this eight hundred seven thousand over the five years uh is intended to cover both retirement plans and is not a duplicative amount.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see anyone's hand up. And similar to Councilmember Simmons, I'd like to just reiterate, and I thank you, Mayor Sidnor, for clarifying that regarding the cap being for twenty twenty-seven, but just want to put on the record that if we are able to look into options of making this a more robust plan to for our young, slightly younger individuals that are within our staff, that will be great without going over the budget. With no, seeing that we don't have any additional questions or comments from the council members that I see or any objections that I hear. Uh ordinance number two zero four seven will be placed on our October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and council meeting for our first public hearing. Thank you again to Director Michelle Saylor and to Ms. Ostendorf. We appreciate you answering all of our questions, and I promise I will have your name down pat. No.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to agenda item number six. We have ordinance number two zero four eight, which is an ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and to provide an effective date. I believe we have Director Michelle Saylor who will now give us, provide us with additional context. Unless we have Ms. Marika Ostendorf, I think you might be unmuted, just so you know. Uh you now have the floor, Director Saylor.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Sidnor, and council members. Ordinance twenty forty-eight is the seventh amendment to the FY twenty twenty-five operating budget and CIP. While I had anticipated that the amendment six be my last time before you for FY twenty twenty-five. It's just a very small window to deal with certain things for that July work session. And then with the August recess. And then other things came about, so we weren't ready for September either. So this isn't my optimal time and don't intend to be here this time next year for FY twenty-six, so just wanted to get that out there before I move ahead. So I'm not sure if any of you have had a chance to look at the the notes that I provided late this afternoon. And what I tried to do was to give notes for each of the changes to the account categories. So with that being said, the addition to real estate tax revenue of two million dollars includes additional assessment which produced additional tax revenue. More than what the information that we were given when we budgeted for FY twenty-five. So that portion is a million nine thirty-four, seven hundred. Also, part of that two million is sixty-five thousand three hundred, which is for the transit overlay tax area, which again were increased assessments. And the transit overlay area is the, excuse me, the commercial areas of the city which have an additional three cents on the tax rate. And these funds, they'll they'll be an exact corresponding expenditure. And we will transfer these funds to the capital budget in order to provide infrastructure improvements in those commercial areas. Uh moving down to the addition of eleven thousand to personal property tax. There were collections during FY twenty-five of previous tax years. The addition of forty-two thousand five hundred. As you are all well aware, the city tax levy is included on the Prince George's County Tax Bill. And with their resources, while this was more than usual, it was just improved collections and capturing those interest and penalty payments above what we had budgeted. The addition of eight hundred eighty-nine thousand to local income tax. Again, we make our estimates. We're looking when we budget at the at the economy. Certain things are happening, but we do have more residents. So we did receive additional revenue of eight eighty-nine. Highway user revenue, however, was less than what it's the State Highway Administration is really the only agency that gives us any sort of estimate. And this revenue includes gasoline tax, vehicle registration fees, as well as a credit for our maintenance of the street miles that the city maintains within the city limits. So while we even budgeted conservatively compared to what the state had, the numbers the state had given us, we didn't receive seventy-three thousand nine forty-two for that revenue. The reduction of twenty-four thousand six thirty-seven was from cable franchise revenue that we didn't receive. And these revenues have continued to decline with the increase in TV streaming capabilities. So it's a direct reflection of cable subscriptions to both Comcast and Verizon. Three thousand five hundred sixty dollars. The police department received a grant for their up and coming leaders to attend leadership training. A reduction of fifty-four thousand. The Department of Family Services, which provides some offsetting funding for the Laurel Helping Hands. We did not receive that much. However, there's a corresponding expenditure decrease due to the staffing vacancies that we had throughout the year. The nineteen hundred five dollar addition is the farmer's market vendor fees that they're charged when the season starts. And there's an offsetting expenditure in the sustainability budget for that. The decrease of nine thousand nine hundred seventy dollars, again, with the the staffing vacancies for helping hands and counseling being unavailable. We did not receive that revenue for people paying for counseling. Again, there's a offsetting, or no, we used some of the other revenue increases to offset that ninety-nine seventy. There was rental shortfall and facility rentals. But we're able to accommodate that with the increase in pole usage. With swimming pool fees for the same amount, nineteen thousand four hundred ten dollars. Moving down to investment interest, this is just the performance of our investments, of our funds. Between, there's a Maryland government, Maryland local government investment pool. The government agency investment pool. And then our our main general fund account is still provides for an overnight sweep investment, so they performed higher than than what we budgeted. The sale of property, forty-six thousand four fifty. We're using an online auction service, and we were able to sell three dump trucks and three refuse trucks that were taken out of service. The fifty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars was from insurance claim proceeds. And there'll be an offset to both the vehicle maintenance department budget and transferring to the capital budget for future fleet purchases. And then the decrease of nine hundred eighty-eight thousand two forty-seven. So within the budget includes the use of designated funds, like the public safety surcharge or the school surcharge. And because of the increase of these other revenue sources, at the top of the listing, we didn't need to use those designated resources, designated funds. So we're just gonna reduce that and because we have those other increases. Moving on to the expenditures. So we have a decrease in the mayor's budget of eighty-three thousand seven seventy-five. And this was coming from savings in the legal service budget. And then we're moving forty-eight hundred dollars to the budget personnel services budget for, again, banking fees. And then seventy-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars transferred to the employee insurance budget for the health insurance overage. The reduction of two hundred thousand dollars in the economic and community development budget was based on staffing vacancies and savings from grant programs, grants that we administer. We had a number of applicants, but many weren't actually eligible. And so this two hundred thousand will be transferred to the employee insurance budget. And the sustainability program budget, that's the addition of the nineteen hundred five dollars for the farmer's market registration fees. Then moving down to the grounds maintenance budget, the reduction of fifty-eight thousand five sixty-five. Because there is a utility contingency in that budget, but there were also some staff savings. And that fifty-eight five sixty-five is used to cover the utility overages of the other building budgets, such as the municipal center, the public works facility, the community center, the armory, and the museum. The police department budget had savings due to staff vacancies, and this ninety thousand is being transferred to the CIP to provide funding, the additional funding needed for the dispatch furniture. So to their credit, over at the Craigay Multi-Service Center, they have been able to get grants from Anarundel County and others for programs at the center. And in doing so, have been spending down on those grants which left a savings in the operating budget provided by the city. So here we have the addition, then we have the addition to the auto maintenance department budget of fourteen one sixty-five of the insurance proceeds, part of the insurance proceeds for body repair and other vehicle repairs related to insurance claims. The addition of forty-nine thousand eight hundred to the waste collection budget is because of the disposal fee increase that was implemented by the county in January. um, in January of twenty-five, which was halfway into the, um, fiscal year. But we had savings in, um, highways and street maintenance, um, that were able to cover that overage. Savings in, um, not needing to use temporary staffing, um, or construction and repair supplies. And that's due to the work being done by, that has been done throughout the city with, by WSSC. Um, in addition to the number of streets that, um, Department of Public Works has managed to be able to get engineered and, and get the bids out and, and get those projects started, the projects that you've recently, um, approved. The addition of, uh, thirty-four thousand six twenty to street lighting, um, is literally for the streetlights that were responsible, um, for paying the utility bill. Um, and those utilities, as you know, we went through the FY twenty-six budget process. Um, all the rates have increased, even though we're increasing the number of LED fixtures, um, the rates are outpacing the savings. Um, but we are able to cover that with the savings from, um, staff reassignments and, and the, um, position of the engineer, the, the brief lap salary that we had, um, the first quarter of, of FY twenty-five. We also had staff savings in traffic engineering, so we're reducing that by fifty thousand. And then, um, Department Five Thirty Youth Services Bureau, which includes the Laurel Helping Hands. Fifty-four thousand of that is offset by the reduction of the Prince George's County Grant. But again, that was relative to the expenditures that were made. So we did receive, um, funds based on what we actually did spend, it just wasn't as much as usual. Um, and then with the staffing vacancies, we're able to, um, take one hundred twenty-one thousand and utilize it toward the, um, transfer to the CIP. So then down with principal and interest. Um, that was just a budgeting error, um, for the principal of the twenty-twenty-four local government and infrastructure financing, um, loan. Um, so it's being taken from principal and put into interest. Um, I will come back to, so the six hundred and fifty thousand addition to the retirement, um, budget. So as you're aware, we have everything broken down into departments. We have the Department for Retirement and that is the, the set of accounts we use to record making the city's contribution to the pension plan. Um, just like we have property insurance and, and all of the, um, accounts or department names that you see on the list here. So this would be an additional contribution to the Pension Fund Retirement Plan. Um, and with the one fifty that's in the FY twenty-six budget and this six fifty, um, that would complete the funding for the, um, the COLA that we just discussed in ordinances twenty forty-six and twenty forty-seven. So we wouldn't need to budget in twenty twenty-seven, eight, nine, and thirty, um, as it appears on the chart of those ordinances. Um, property insurance, uh, we have a loss control credit and, um, the expenditures weren't as much as what we were advised by our insurance consultant. Um, we increased by twenty percent over the FY twenty twenty-four. Um, but it was, uh, it was barely an increase over the FY twenty twenty-four actuals, six percent, I think. So then the employee insurance, here you have the full addition, you know, the money that came from the mayor's budget and the money that came from ECD. Um, we had employee coverage changes, um, which included the addition of, of children and, um, those changing from single to double or double the family, which increases the city's expenditure and share. Uh, you know, it's an eighty-twenty split, the city pays eighty percent. Um, and the employees pay twenty percent through their payroll deduction. Um, and so that, those are, that's a significant cost. Um, but we did have a lot of changes this year. And then the miscellaneous financing, financing uses is the transfer to the CIP of one million eight hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. And I will be able to provide you with a reconciliation of exactly how I got here between the revenues, subtracting the revenues that didn't meet the projection, um, and then the reductions in some of the expenditure budget, um, to where we get to the million eight fifty-three four fourteen. Here's the offset of the sixty-five thousand three hundred for the transit tax overlay area to be transferred to this CIP. And then the thirty-five sixty for the police grant for the leadership training. So overall, it's an increase to the operating budget of two million sixty-eight thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Did you want to ask questions about the operating budget before I move to the CIP or?
Are there any, um, questions from the council regarding the operational budget? I see, uh, Councilmember Simmons, please feel free to proceed.
Uh, thanks, Madam President, and thank you, uh, Director Saylor, uh, for clarifying about the discretionary COLA in FY twenty-five. I had seen that in the preamble to the ordinance and I was wondering where to refer to, but that was helpful to understand that of the eight hundred and seven we had just been talking about a little bit earlier. Uh, we actually, you're given, this gets approved, we're able to like fully fund that between the extra monies through FY twenty-five plus the one fifty in twenty twenty-six, if I understood you correctly, I think.
Yeah.
Yes, which would be, which would be great. Um, the, and then I think from a, from a high level, uh, you know, it, it seems like basically we got somewhere around a two-point-nine increase at the top level. You know, roughly nine hundred thousands or so, like you say, we're able to reduce the pull from designated funds, um, so that we can leave them where they were. And the other one-point-eight-ish, we're moving to the CIP, to the capital improvement side of the budget, just to be able to fund plans there. One curiosity, would, the designated fund that we're able to just return that money to, what is that designated fund? Uh, does it have a, or is it a couple of them?
Um, it would be the, um, the school surcharge fund and the public safety surcharge fund.
Okay.
Um,
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, and the speed camera funds.
The speed camera funds. And then one last, this is just a numerical curiosity. I noticed that the, um, the decrease in the facility rentals sort of was, uh, just the same as the increase in swimming pool fees, um, which seems, um, maybe by mere coincidence that they were exactly the same, but I was just curious for that. It was like nineteen thousand four-ten, um, between those two.
Sure, and I believe it was the overage in the swimming pool fees, might have been twenty-one thousand or something, but in order to cover that facility rental shortage, I just tried to make it a little bit easier on myself to keep track of.
That's fine, I know every once in a while, there's numbers who just come up right next to each other and it's sort of a miracle, but I was curious, thank you. That helped clarify. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, any additional questions or comments regarding the operational budget for ordinance number two zero four eight? I don't see any. Um, I just wanted to make a comment to say thank you to the departments because I know with the grants that you mentioned and the money that has come in to offset, I know that's not always easy, especially in times like this. So thank you for searching for those funds so that we can do more, um, with what we have. Um, so if there are no additional questions or comments from the council, um, and no objections on moving this forward, we will place this on the agenda for the October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and council meeting for our first public hearing. Uh, we'll move directly to.
If I object, I, I think the director was going to take, walk us through the capital improvement, uh, part of it as well.
Right, but I think that's agenda item number seven, correct, Director Saylor?
There, there is a CIP component to twenty forty-eight as well.
Okay, then, let's go back, thank you for, uh, mentioning that, Councilmember Simmons. I was looking at the agenda and I said, okay, she must be talking about, uh, number two zero four nine. So we'll move back to ordinance number two zero, zero four eight to discuss the capital improvement portion.
Thank you. Um, excuse me, so of the available funds of the one million eight fifty-three four fourteen that we're transferring in, um, we are proposing to add a hundred thousand dollars to fleet, which is mostly from the, um, the sale of property as well as insurance proceeds. The hundred and fourteen thousand six fourteen, um, and I will just add, uh, as we went through the twenty twenty-six budget process, if the, the departments, um, provide requests for, uh, capital projects. Um, and at that point, we didn't have a lot of funds to, uh, you know, add to their projects. So these, these proposals didn't just come, you know, out of nowhere. They've kind of been sitting idle since we went through the twenty-six, uh, budget process. So anytime that we can find the money to, um, further those projects, you know, we, we add, that's always been the priority is to add to the CIP and to the pension funds. Um, so that's how they, uh, came up. Um, so the hundred thousand six fourteen for environmental, um, for big belly composting units at city properties, um, possibly stormwater management programs, city facilities with landscaping to capture stormwater runoff and energy efficiency upgrades in city facilities like lighting sensors and solar panels. The non-destructive pavement, pavement evaluation. Um, we add money to this project every few years as it's needed. Um, and this is to test streets, um, through the Department of Public Works and the engineers, uh, to determine priorities of, um, reconstructing streets. A hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred is a federal grant match for the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for traffic safety, which will be managed by Public Works. Fifty thousand dollars for the Cherry Lane Bike Way, uh, is a state grant match. LED streetlights, seventy-five thousand, um, just to take on another section of converting the older lamps to the LED. Uh, fifty thousand dollars additional for the master plan. Um, so the project was added, um, to the CIP several years ago. Um, I'll get the year for you, but anyway, twenty-five was added when we had the funds, knowing that it was going to be coming up in twenty twenty-five. Um, but we find that we need additional funds for the consultants to handle some community engagement, the code review, and the document preparation. Um, there's that ninety thousand dollars for the LPD Dispatch Furniture Replacements. Uh, major facility maintenance, so, um, we're looking at an additional seventy-five thousand, uh, funding need for the armory roof replacement. Um, other funds, I believe, of two hundred thousand are in previous ordinances that you approved. But the quotes are, are coming back higher than what the funds that we have. A hundred thousand dollars for city facility renovations, um, paint, flooring, doors. There's still some rooms here at the municipal center that have the original carpet from the mid-nineties. Um, you know, some of the reconfigurations of the offices that have been done, um, require different doors and, and then the replacement, fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of the city hall main electric panel. Um, a hundred thousand dollars additional for our new property at seventy-seven oh one Sandy Spring Road for security and fencing. An additional four hundred thousand for the HVAC replacement project, which has been in the CIP that you've approved. Um, and that would be several HVAC replacements in city facilities. As well as, um, special needs for the archive room HVAC, um, you know, to prevent too much humidity in the document storage areas. Um, three hundred thousand for Anderson's Corner Park. Um, this will be the city share, uh, match, I'm sorry, match for the, um, program open space funds. And then two hundred thousand dollars for park improvements, uh, citywide for upgrades to pavilions and tables and grills and other, um, amenities in the parks, so. And there's our million eight fifty-three four fourteen. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I know that was a lot for me to understand, I know it was a lot for you to work on, so. Thank you for your work on this, are there any additional questions? Um, Councilmember Simmons, uh, Mills, Councilwoman Johnson, regarding, um, ordinance number two zero four eight. Uh, Councilmember Mills, feel free to proceed.
Yeah, I was just wanted to mention about the, um, the line item from ninety thousand for the furniture. Um, but, uh, that Director Cornwell, she'll said that, um, it was, you know, over a hundred thousand.
Um, there's already fifty thousand in the FY twenty-five CIP.
From earlier?
Right.
What was that about, like a year ago or so?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. I don't see additional questions, I just have one, um, question, Director Saylor. I know you mentioned with the LED lights, you said that, um, it was not under budgeted, but the, the bills were a lot more this year with the changes and the increases, even though we have tried to establish LED lights to do savings. For the seventy, is it, yeah, seventy-five thousand on page three, do we feel like that's sufficient and will include a possible increase? Or do you think we might go over again and need to transfer more money?
Um, so that seventy-five thousand is the actual installation of new light.
Okay.
At the utility, not the utility bills.
Okay.
But we are monitoring the current budget, given, you know, that we have the, um, the shortage in twenty-five. And we did increase the twenty-six compared to the twenty-five, but still. But yes, this seventy-five thousand here is for the, um, the installation.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And just regarding the Cherry Lane Bike Way, um, as mentioned before, I would love to see if our bike lanes were, are that, for it to be created, definitely, but for our bike lane to be a different color, just so it stands out a little bit more for the safety of the bike riders, but also so people understand that, that they're there because sometimes they just see it as an open parking spot for them. So thank you, um, for, uh, discussing this and answering our questions regarding ordinance number two zero four eight. Um, as I said, mentioned previously a little bit early, um, I don't see any additional questions or comments from the council. Are there any objections on moving this to our virtual regular meeting? I don't see any objections. Um, so with that, this item will be placed on our October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and city council meeting for a first public hearing. Now we can officially move to agenda item number seven, which is ordinance number two zero four nine and ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would just like to add about the previous ordinance that at least we have a little bit of extra time, um, between the work session and the first meeting. So if there are other questions, you know, I know it was a lot. Um, and so it's a lot for us to digest, so, um, just let us know if you need more information. Um, so ordinance twenty forty-nine is the first amendment to the FY twenty twenty-six general operating budget and CIP. So we're adding, um, seventeen thousand two hundred dollars in state grants. Uh, of that one thousand is a state grant, um, to provide more materials for the Laurel Citizens University. Sixteen thousand two hundred is a Chesapeake Bay Trust Grant. Um, both actually awarded from applications made by Ms. Blair. Um, both actually awarded from applications made by Ms. Blair. Um, so the Chesapeake Bay Grant is for um additional staffing for the farmer's market and promotional, I, not promotional items, yes, promotional items and the purchases of rain barrels. We have uh the hundred fifty thousand one thirty in federal asset funds um to fund the purchase of the replacement tasers and sidearms um that you awarded in August. Um, when the needs first uh came up by the police department, um, we put a freeze on their spending for equipment as the chief man had, had mentioned in his um presentations, um, but now we're, you know, adding these funds to the police budget um so that they can make the originally uh budgeted equipment purchases in F Y twenty twenty six. The hundred and fifty thousand dollar, so that's the operating budget additions of a hundred and sixty seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Moving on to the capital budget, so we have the addition of the hundred and fifty thousand to the Cherry Lane Bike Way. This is the state's portion, um, the state grant awarded uh to the application by Public Works. Um, a federal grant of four fifty one two hundred, again, the application by Public Works um to design the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan for traffic safety. Two hundred twenty four thousand two hundred forty six dollars, a state grant through uh Department of Natural Resources to replace the playground equipment at Wilson Park. Um, that was last replaced in two thousand and three. Uh, ten thousand dollar Exelon Grant, um, B G E basically for sustainability, for the organics recycling program. And then two million seven hundred thousand is state-funded uh Department of Natural Resources Program Open Space. Um, and this will be for the development of the Anderson Corner Park. I will say that before uh after conversations with Ms. Blair this afternoon, and I apologize, the ten thousand dollar Exelon Grant should really be in her operating budget, so I'll make that adjustment. Um, and get you a revised version of the ordinance. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. I see uh Mayor Sidnor, feel free to proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to reiterate that if you look at the expenditures on the two seventy, when I mentioned about the mayor discretionary budget, community promotion budget, hundred fifty seven thousand twenty nine nine dollars, that's money that we know that's been consistent ever since I've been a city councilman. And that's one of the reasons why I was very comfortable with the budget for the next five years, because that's discretionary money and that money would not hurt um uh, uh, employing pay, the services are, you know, services and things of that nature. That's discretionary money that we use to uh help organizations out. And so if we had to cut something, I would cut that discretionary money first for those retirees. So that's why I was very comfortable with the pension plan once we uh came with the budget numbers that way. So I just want to highlight that, that services we provide for the city, benefits, pay, uh equipment, you know, it, I don't see her, hurting us in the next five years or so. So because that community promotion budget, once again, that's discretionary money, that's money that we use to help organizations out. Not saying that we can't help them out, but we have to cut something, I will cut that first before I cut anything else. I just wanted to let you know that, Council.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. I see Council uh member Adrian Simmons' hand. Feel free to proceed.
Yes, and you can just to clarify and make sure I've been hearing right, I, I think uh based on looking at the F Y twenty five numbers and F Y twenty six, we will have essentially satisfied that COLA with simply the hundred fifty thousand in F Y twenty six, because we already, so there's not as much real concern about the future years, which I think is good, um, but uh, but just to make the observation. The other thing, and, and just echoing a little bit of President Clark's comment earlier, it is, you know, as I'm looking at these numbers, we're just shy of four million dollars in grants. Obviously, the big one being the two point seven from Anderson's uh Corner Park. Um, that is really helping fund, so again, uh, a huge thank you to the staff. I know applying for grants is not an easy process and sometimes it's a lengthy process, but that type of uh impact is definitely huge for our city. And I'm really looking forward to the Anderson Corner redevelopment too and having that open space down there. And so um, just to express some excitement uh for that, and I thank you also to the city team.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Any additional questions or comments regarding ordinance number two zero five zero? I'm sorry, two zero four nine? I'm already looking ahead. No? Um, I just wanted, for me, my comment, I just wanted to say I'm very excited to see uh the Wilson Park Playground Replacement on this budget. I know that that was something that I also recommended um via email, but also put in a ticket. It is, it is very worn, um, but people still use it. And so it's great to see this on here, so thank you so much for that. Um, seeing that there are no additional questions, comments, um, do we have any objections on moving this forward for our virtual regular meeting on October fifteenth? I don't see any. Um, so hearing none or seeing none, uh, ordinance number two zero four nine will be placed on our October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and council meeting for a first public hearing. Thank you for taking the time to explain all of that to us, um, Director Saylor, and for working on this.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Now, moving to agenda item number eight, we have ordinance number two zero five zero, which is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Section two zero dash six point one three, Table of Residential Uses, and Section twenty dash twenty two point seven three, Body Art Establishments. Um, to provide context, we have Deputy Director Monte Burrow. This was sponsored by fellow councilmember uh James Cole. Feel free, you now have the floor, Deputy Director, thank you.
Thank you, um, good evening, Madam President, Mayor, and members of the council. Present it for your consideration, text amendment number two six nine, ordinance number twenty fifty, submitted in accordance with the City of Laurel Code. This legislation seeks to amend the city's Unified Land Development Code to reflect evolving planning priorities and zoning requirements. This proposed, proposed ordinance will provide an amendment to the following section of the Laurel Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulation, Section twenty dash six point thirteen, Table of Residence Uses, and Section twenty dash twenty two point seventy three, Body Art Establishments. Section twenty dash six point thirteen of the code outlines the table of residence uses. This proposed amendment will re, revise the existing provisions related to tourist homes uses within residential zoning districts, ensuring alignment with updated land use policies and committee standards. Section K outlines the compliance requirements for a tourist home. The proposed changes are as follows. One, the requirement that a tourist home must be located within a single-family detached and attached townhomes are shown, I mean, are allowed dwellings that is permanent residence of the owner will be omitted from R thirty, R eighteen, R ten multifamily zone. Five, the restrictions allow only one tourist home per city. Street will be removed for many more than one tourist home per street. Six, the clause prohibiting rentals for less than three days between visitors stays will be omitted. Section twenty dash twenty two point seventy three of the code pertains to body art establishment. This proposed amendment will revise and expand the current provisions related to body piercing uses within a designated commercial industrial zoning districts. The proposed text amendment will revise the health and sanitary requirements applicable to each body art establishment. Section five A, five C, five D, five F, five G, five A, five J, five K, five L, five Q, five S, five T, five X, five Y, five B B, as well as section six, eight, and ten of section twenty dash twenty two or seventy three of the code outline specific changes and guidelines designed to promote the health, safety, sanct, sanctuary-focused operations of a body art establishment. This amendment modifies section twenty dash six point thirteen of the code, which outlines the table of residential uses and section twenty dash twenty two point seventy three, which pertains to body art establishment. These changes will enable the City of Laurel to align with zoning regulations with current industry ten and healthy and safety practice. If there's any question regarding them, I and the building official are happy to answer there, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Are there questions or comments from the council regarding uh ordinance number two zero five zero? Councilmember Simmons, feel free to proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um, and just to clarify for, for people who may be watching, terms of tourist home, um, the definition is really more towards like a short-term rental. Um, so it might be things like Airbnb or V R B O or that type of thing, is sort of what we're describing here. And the change is to say, all right, it's now single-family or, or detached homes uh or attached uh as, but not multifamily is sort of the changing and the zoning there. Um, certainly if uh, you know, folks watching have some comments or observations, um, please feel free to, to forward to us as we consider. Um, one, one other um thing, I, I know I, was weird to me was the fact that we've got sort of two things in one. We've got tourist homes and body art in one. Um, I, I don't know if it makes a difference, but uh maybe something to consider is just breaking them out into separate ones. Like, because I don't know if one may or may not have any impact in terms of conversations and voting. Uh, so just something to mention here at this stage of the work session. Um, one other thing to mention is uh, I, I did have opportunity to sort of connect with some of the tattoo parlors that we have here in the city. Mm, one to just make sure they're aware of the considerations that, you know, we're making primarily towards, you know, health and, and safety type things. Um, you know, one of them mentioned to, to share that uh in, in his mind, part of this was sort of update some of the code for some of the techniques that are used now in the sense of the code currently requires alcohol wipes to be applied to a tattooed area at the end, but it's actually not the best thing to do to take alcohol, put it on a freshly tattooed area. So they use different things to make sure it's properly sanitized. So this is sort of updating for little things like that, as well as for uh more recent developments in bloodboard pathogens. So having a clean surface on the floor, having clean surface on the wall, and if, if blood were to escape, if you will, that there's an easy way to clean it as well as to contain it. So um, the, and then changes in some of the ear piercing techniques as well, which is the first part of this uh in the definition stage. So anyways, I just wanted to share a, a couple of comments to that end, and um, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. Are there any additional questions or comments from the council? I don't see any. I have a couple. All right, so starting off, um, I just want to say thank you to Council uh Member Cole and the staff for your work on this. Um, I think it's important that we modernize the codes, of course, and um, this is great um to start. Also, um, I just wanted to flag a few areas that I think maybe we could strengthen or maybe I need additional understanding. So when I see a, regarding tourist home, and I, I thank you, Councilmember Simmons, for clarifying that that's referring to Airbnb, V R B O, et cetera. My first concern or just question about it is um density control. Um, I know with removing that line, just wondering, um, with removing the one per street limit entirely. I was just wondering if maybe staff could kind of clarify um the rationale. I can see, you know, both sides of it, but maybe one per street might be too restrictive, but no limit at all, you know, could create the concentrations that change the neighborhoods and the character of the neighborhoods. Um, is there a middle ground that maybe we can do, like maybe two or three per street with the distance requirement or a percentage gap? Also, um, regarding townhomes, you know, I think this could work, but most townhouses have HOAs. Um, and so just wondering about the covenants about commercial use with that, and if we need to, the language requiring H O A approval, or what about the parking requirements? Regardless, I know that they tend to have tighter parking around those areas. Um, and just wondering if the city attorney has also kind of shared her thoughts on that. And then third, the regulations. Um, I know I would try to take a look or find out about Annapolis Frederick or Rockville um, and them adopting comprehensive short-term rental frameworks. I'm just wondering if perhaps this should be, we should think about uh having a comprehensive short-term rental legislation rather than just updating old tourist home rules. Um, and just wondering if we should create a modern framework for the property owners and neighbors, um, just so those, that's a lot to start. Um, but that's just regarding the tourist homes, if you don't mind answering or giving your expertise. I see, I see the side eye, no, just joking. I'm here to listen and learn.
Um, well, to answer your questions, I'm gonna try to go in order, because you gave me all of them at the same time. But um, in reference to the tourist homes, when we sat and looked at the legislation and the way that it's written, the reason why we decided that it would be a better idea to get rid of the one per city street is because there's no way for us to adequately enforce that in the grand scheme of things. Um, this legislation has been written for quite some time now and throughout the process of us going through the ordinance and seeing where we could make corrections or how can we, how we can improve the code. Um, we realized very quickly that of our city residents that are trying to get into having tourist homes or are interested in uh joining that platform, we are sensitive to the fact that this is not only an income base for a lot of people and individuals and families, um, but we also want to make sure that we're doing this in the way that it's enforceable. We, we went through the ordinance, we didn't just look at our ordinance, we looked at our enforcement measures and the way that we plan on um doing inspections and how we go and how we plan on achieving compliance as a city. Um, part of the restrictions with this are these homes are required to go through an inspection on a quarterly basis as opposed to a yearly basis like you would uh with certain commercial businesses, two-year or even three-year to be more in line with what we already do for our rental licensing, which is why we didn't decide to adopt a short-term rental um language, because we already offer rental license. And a short-term rental in the grand scheme of things is a rental license, it's just a different lease agreement. Um, but as with this, you have people that are joining a platform, there's not much vetting involved um with the overall tendency, but the city is making a stride to make sure that we're doing this in a way that it's both sustainable and um safe, because we have to constantly go out and look at these homes as well as act as an enforcement agent on behalf of the city to make sure everything is being regulated. And what were your other questions? Because you had quite a few.
I feel like you didn't hear me, no kidding. Um, my other ones uh regarding the townhouses, um, HOAs.
Yes, so because the city doesn't get involved in H O A covenants now. And we don't plan, intend on doing that, that's a totally separate agreement that homeowners enter when they buy their properties. HOAs can change uh based off of the property owners, like discretion, they go through them, we, they cycle through them frequently. So to avoid the city overstepping our bounds, we don't get involved with that in the same manner that we don't now. Now, if the H O A tells a homeowner that they can't, because they, they are already in that agreement with their H O A, it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that they are doing their due diligence in reference to what their homeowners association would allow, not necessarily just uh following the clear face with the city, because we also have people do the exact same thing for decks. HOAs have their own set of rules and covenances, and we don't infringe on those rights.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and um, does that also include the parking requirements regarding tighter parking? Because I, if we're gonna expand this, would that?
We talked, we talked about that as well. So we already work um hand-in-hand with uh making sure that we're enforcing for parking enforcement in addition to us doing parking enforcement, like we to already do in conjunction with the police. Um, for the homes that require parking passes, when we do our inspection, we ask the homeowner about that ahead of time to make sure that we are doing our due diligence. But it's the homeowner's responsibility to make sure that they are letting their um temporary tenants or their guests know about what the parking restrictions are in their neighborhoods. Currently, none of the uh H O A communities in the city, uh, well, not that many, I'm not gonna say not. Not that many of them have parking permits and parking passes, and that also is why we chose not to allow it in condos or even um apartments, because there's this totally separate vetting process. Uh, parking is very different in those communities, whereas you, people have a lot more flexibility and the city is able to properly enforce in a townhouse and even a single-family home.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, I think the last one was in regards to um whether this portion of the ordinance for tourist homes should be a separate uh short-term rental legislation rather than just updating this?
No, yeah, so the reason for that is because the city already has a standard of habitability that is the well-defined in chapter eighteen under our rental housing standards. If you're renting a property for a six-month term or longer, we would obviously advise people to get a rental license, but because we already go through that process with rental licensing, especially because rental licenses cover properties that are renting on a month-to-month. But because we already go through that process with rental licensing, especially because rental licenses cover properties that are renting on a month-to-month basis. Um and they're not found on an Airbnb platform where you can cycle through um tenants or even set. Like the homeowner doesn't have the option to necessarily set whatever time they want them to go. If they decide to stay past that point, then obviously they would have to pursue. Legal matters, but it's a totally separate way of operating than a rental would be. And so in order to not make the process confusing on behalf of the citizens, we decided to keep them separate. Especially because we already have legislation in place for both of those things.
Thank you. I appreciate you clarifying. Now, just to reconfirm. So I think what I hear you saying is we have legislation that sets boundaries so that. Short-term rentals will not take over a neighborhood and push out individuals who have single-family homes, correct?
So that's what the whole point of this is, yes. Um because our goal is to make sure that we're doing this in a way that's both sustainable and equitable. Um because we know that there's already a thriving market for it, and we don't want um neighborhoods to become Airbnb hubs. By having uh us go in and um reinforce the way that we're doing the licensing in a way that makes sense without trying to like. Say we can only have one per street because we've realized very quickly that's not necessarily the case, especially if these platforms allow more than one. To go on the street. In terms of overall enforcement, it becomes really hard to get a rain on something that. We don't necessarily control all of the licensing for. Yes, you can join the Airbnb platform and the city does have ways to go about. Um correcting issues where people aren't necessarily complying, but we also wanted to be sensitive to the fact that this is now an income stream for a lot of people. Especially given the fact that um jobs are not what they used to be, the economy is not what it used to be, the city can't control everything, but the things that we can control. We wanted to make sure that we were still um being sensitive to that as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I asked that question only because I've heard um often from the residents. A deep concern about so many rentals in the neighborhood and how they feel like it's changed. The feel um of the neighborhood um and the disruption factor. Because there are individuals who don't live there, so they're not quite as invested. Um so I I I want to support uh residents who want to do the our VRBOs and the Airbnbs, however, not. So much that it then makes it um. Unhabitable for people who have already lived there.
And that's what we tried to address by making sure that we are being a lot more restrictive with the way that we're gonna enforce and the increased enforcement schedule.
Okay, thank you. And just the second part um regarding the body art. Um where were the sanitation protocols pulled from? Um I saw that there were some changes or updates. Regarding the sink and then also not having the single use anymore. Um I think that was. Removed or suggested to be removed? I'm just wondering where the sanitation protocols were pulled from to add, make those edits?
Or which section of the body art legislation in particular?
Um I saw. Sorry, I'm going, trying to go uh in the sections where they had single use. Um trying to find it again. And I can always email this to you um to ask that question, and then you can provide the answer. But I just want wanted to understand, I think there were, that I do see, you do you see it?
It's on X. So wearing work tattoo or piercing artist shall wear clean, single-use barrier protections. Gloves to avoid contact and exchange of bodily fluids. Is that what?
No, it was um. I don't want to take up all the time. I I know I just had it. Um I can email you. I can, I don't want to take the time for, I can email you, but I saw where there, single use, I believe it was about the dye or the ink. Um and it was removed so that it wasn't single use. I'm like, and I'm just trying to understand. Is it gonna be a shared dye and ink? Like what was the suggestion there and where was that pulled from regarding sanitation protocol? But again, I can email you that because I don't want to take up a lot of time um looking for that. For your answer. And um I just had a question about the uh. Healing requirements um for the multi-session tattoos. And was wondering like if somebody has a small blemish that they have between like sessions. They then have to wait thirty days and extend that timeline for them to get something done, even though it may have healed. Just with that change that I saw.
Um and what section in particular is that in? Okay.
Yeah, I I might, I I don't, I'll probably have to look for it again. I can email, I'll just write down, email that to you as well.
Was that letter I perhaps?
Let me see.
Before starting a tattooing procedure, you must remove everything and then all cuts or sores must be bandaged. Oh, there it is, and K says the thirty days um.
Yes, thirty day, the thirty days were definitely in there. Yes, okay, thank you.
Oh, okay. And what was your question? I found it.
Um like if si- if someone has a small blemish. It says at least thirty days, they would have to wait. So if they have like something very small in between, they still need to wait the thirty days, they can't. Do it once they're healed up.
Um so we can definitely get you the the justification behind it. But part of it, or a more detailed description of a part of the reason for the thirty-day period. Is not only to ensure that the person's wound is fully cleared because a wound can clear, but the moment that you introduce um a needle because. And when you tattoo someone, you're essentially giving them a scar. Like, yes, it looks nice, but it's still a scar nonetheless. So by agitating the area before that thirty-day window, you run the risk of potentially causing or spreading, causing it to get worse. Or potentially spreading any of the pathogens that they may have around the shop. So the thirty-day period essentially cover not, it covers not only the shop from the possibility of contaminating their workspace. But it also works to keep the person um safe as well. And we can definitely get you more legislation on that.
Okay, thank you. And I also plan on emailing just a question about uh page two, section D under five. Regarding the uh six by six and the minimum of a hundred and square feet. I wasn't sure if that was supposed to be aligned with the number or if there was a purpose for that, but I'll email that because that's not necessary to answer right now. All right, thank you. Councilmember Simmons, I see you have your hand up. Feel free.
Uh yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh just to clarify a question further that President Clark had asked. In terms of concerns citizens may raise in terms of an Airbnb hub, switching back to the tourist home part of this legislation. If there is no limit on the number of short-term rentals on a given street, then there is no way to prevent hubs like that. But is that an accurate statement?
I think we're, so with the Airbnb homes, it's, yes, it is an accurate statement that there is no way to totally prevent that. Um but I don't necessarily believe that we'll be creating hubs because people can make the same arguments for. Not wanting to be in neighborhoods that are full of rentals. The city has over five thousand rentals. Um and at any given moment, you can go down a street anywhere in the city and every home on the street is a rental property. So it's unrealistic to assume that people are, people who do own their homes, who are not interested in renting to a consistent. One, like to one tenant consistently isn't gonna use their home as a way for them to make money. Especially because on this platform, it allows homeowners the opportunity to still live in their homes and rent out spaces in their home. Um this will also stop people from putting in illegal basements, or I mean not illegal basements, illegal kitchens. So we currently have an ordinance in the city that does not allow for an accessory kitchen within your home. But us being able to go into these Airbnbs, especially if they are in a situation where they're renting out a room upstairs and a room downstairs. Um we're making sure that they are not, at no point do we have like two kitchens operating. Uh we're making sure that everyone's doing everything safely. If they choose to use this platform as um alternative. I don't foresee there being a circumstance where we have. Whole neighborhoods that decide tomorrow, like, oh yeah, I'm gonna Airbnb my uh house. And that trickles down throughout the neighborhood, but I do foresee us looking at a situation where we're gonna have at least one or two. Um on any given street. And that's what we're trying to make sure that we are being sensitive to.
Yeah, yeah, and to that point, yeah, there's um, there's the difference between safe rental. Environments, um which is covered by a different part of the code, and the decree to which a short-term rental can be possible. And you know, what the right number is or or whether it should be unlimited, you know, is is the question being adjusted by this um. The, you know, and and as you mentioned, sort of income streams, there is, it's. And 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 communities all around the country and the state are struggling with the same question, you know, and. The short-term versus the long-term, like some can good income stream from a long-term tenant, and short-term isn't the only possibility. But communities are seeing the impact of that. Um so I I think it's a relevant question to ask and to converse about and sort of listen to the community in my mind and other members of council. Um but uh I just did want to clarify there, there is no guarantee against concentration by removing the limit that is is here. Uh thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Um are there any additional questions or comments from the council regarding ordinance number two zero five zero? I don't see any hands. All right. Um. All right, well, hearing no additional uh questions or comments from the council, and I don't see any objections on moving this. Forward to place it on our October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and council meeting.
May I interject a recommendation to divide this ordinance uh into two separate topics so that each can get the attention appropriate?
Uh if you could please clarify what you mean.
So there's two topics in one piece of paper and there's only one vote. One has to do with the rentals and one has to do with tattoo parlors and body art. In my mind, I think you would better facilitate conversation um to have these be two different agenda items. And be two different ordinances for us to consider and to vote on.
Now, just to clarify, I think all of this is under one ordinance, correct, and under um one section of our code. And uh I see we have a. Ms Christian Pulli, you have your hand up, CA? Yes, please.
Yes, good evening. Um historically, for the most part, uh text amendments for zoning code updates are usually done under one ordinance. There have been times when we've done multiple ordinances, but typically when we have code updates for our zoning code is usually one ordinance that. Propose changes that. If um the council would like for us in the future to start doing multiple ordinances for just various updates for the zoning code. That can be done, but I just want us to be consistent.
Thank you for adding that additional context. We appreciate it. City Administrator, um did you have, I see, I think your hands up, Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, yes. No, and I appreciate the city administrator's uh uh comments and context there. It's helpful. To my knowledge, and and the sir may be able to comment, there's no reason we would not legally be able to divide this into two separate ordinances. Um I know sometimes when modifying a long code, if you're making a bunch of just administrative type corrections, you might have an omnibus type. Uh ordinance to sort of cover a lot of areas. In my mind, though, these are sufficiently different and they're sufficiently uh significant. Questions that answer that I I would support uh dividing these into two different ordinances.
Thank you. I received your recommendation regarding dividing this into two ordinances. Councilmember Mills, your hand was up, it's down. Did you still have a comment or a question?
Yes, this is a.
Feel free to.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I was just saying that um with with them being combined with, because we're talking about business. So that's how I perceive it. So maybe that's, you know, can be left together.
Okay, so I hear that we, oh, Councilwoman Christine Johnson, feel free to proceed.
Uh just to add, since we are voicing our opinions and since they are pretty separate, and I think we are discussing that. Um the one home per street, we're still kind of deliberating about that. I would um agree that they could be separate if we could.
Thank you for your input as well. So I hear from council, what I hear from Councilmember Simmons and from Councilwoman Johnson. Um is that they would prefer and recommend that we put these into two separate ordinances. I also heard from City Administrator Pulli um that the general status has been to include them into one. I do hear from Councilmember Mills. Um that he believes this is um focused on business and to keep them together. Um do you have an additional comment or question, Councilmember Mills?
Yes, if um. Uh Director Pulli can come back on and um just uh give a clarification, um you know, reasons why. You know. While we have.
City Administrator, oh, there she is. Can you repeat your question, Councilman Mills?
Yeah, just, I mean, just a for a clarification of why, I I perceive it as, I perceive it as.
It looks like you're freezing.
Am I freezing?
You're okay on my end.
Okay.
I think um, oh, there she is. I think uh CA Pulli may be freezing, but I think you're unfrozen now.
Oh, all right. So I would just, while we have you. Um my perception was or is that we're talking about business. And so that is why it's in conjunction. I mean, it is pretty simple to separate, but I'm just wondering because of past history, why, you know, why would they combine like that?
I think uh City Administrator Pulli might be frozen right now. Um she might be logging off and logging back on to rejoin with us. Um but that's, that is a good question, just while we're waiting on uh City Administrator Pulli. I also want to understand what you're asking, um Councilmember Mills, but at the same time, I do also agree with. Councilmember Johnson and Simmons in regards to separating them if. The rental is definitely separate from the um. The body art, because it, the way it went written together, it sounds like it's all in one and it's not. Um so I understand, and I think I have a feeling Councilmember Simmons is thinking of the idea that there may be additional questions regarding the. Rental portion um and that and that don't, shouldn't hold up the body art piece. That's what I'm assuming. Um I see uh City Administrator Pulli, are you back with us? I saw for a moment. Um. So as uh CA Pulli attempts to join us, oh, Mayor Senator, please feel free to proceed.
Yeah, let's um, I have a solicitor on the phone as well, so we we're talking about it as well, so City Administrator Pulli might add more to it, but uh I'll stop.
So sorry for that. It looks like I lost internet connection. So also another thing, if we were to split this up into ordinances, we will have to. Ads for this, so it will cost the city additional uh money. That's another reason why we compile. Different or a lot of different topics within one ordinance, but like I said earlier, it's up to the council, whatever your pleasure is, we'll make sure we accommodate it.
Well, if, um thank you for that additional information. It sounds as though if we keep it together um with one ordinance. We may either need to make the recommendations, and if it needs to take a little bit longer than it does, however. I know that all of us are probably on the same page of not wanting to spend more money than we need to regarding um receiving. Uh additional feedback on that from our our solicitor. Um so with that feedback that CA Pulli has provided regarding it may cost us a little bit more. I just want to make sure I'm on the same page with you. Uh Councilmember Simmons, you're still interested in separating?
Yes, and and I'm I'm happy to move it into a separate document if it's helpful to the legal fees.
Okay, and um uh Councilwoman Johnson, are you still interested in separating the ordinance uh the ordinances?
So I'm sorry, I understand that if we separate it, it's an additional charge, but if we keep it together, it just may take longer. So to save money, it'll just take longer, like that's where I think.
It may not, I don't think it'll save money per se, as you say, because it, yes, because it's, and CA Pulli, you may uh want to interject as well. I would assume we may still need to ask the city solicitor questions. If we're looking to make additional changes, but I'm not sure how that would work. Um, oh, Councilmember Simmons, I'm sorry.
Yes, may may I ask the solicitor to.
Man, I'm not really sure what the question would be, two separate ordinances, two separate topics, we'll just.
I think you froze, um CA Pulli, you said two separate ordinances, two separate topics. Oh, uh. Ms Green, um City Clark, feel free to proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Um I think uh CA Pulli is still having uh connection issues. Um the other thing that she was trying to point out is that we also have to prepare two separate advertisements. In the newspaper, which costs more. Um so when you have a tax amendment, you're legally required to. Um post an ad and for each one in the uh press charges post. And that is a significant cost, so just for adding that in. Um and I, you know, I don't know, we probably would have to maybe have um the city solicitor review a little bit more. Of, you know, separating them out, just the cursory review, but again, it's another, another charge.
Thank you for that. Uh Councilmember Simmons?
Yes, no, that was very helpful in terms of notification. Are we talking on the scale of like a hundred bucks in the PG? Post, or are we talking like a thousand bucks in the PG post? I I don't know. I'm curious.
Uh that's a good question. Um when I was the painting uh commission secretary, it was up to like two hundred and some dollars then. And that's been about seven years. So I'd imagine it's. So I'd imagine it's probably between three and four hundred each by now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think, Councilmember Mills, do you mind if we let Mayor Sidnor speak? And then, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Our solicitor is on the phone with me right now. She's gonna make a comment, but she's, no, it's still up to you guys' decisions. She just wanted to add comments to what City Administrator Pulli was saying as well.
Oh, and I apologize, I lost internet service. My comment, can they hear me?
Yes, they can hear me.
Okay, my comment was that even though it's in one ordinance, it will be addressing the different sections of the code. So when I wanted to make sure that the ordinance is then gonna get codified. So it won't be confusing once it's placed in our code. It'll be applicable to those sections.
That makes sense to me. I'm not gonna ask right now. But thank you very much, City Solicitor. That is helpful in understanding that this is more of a process, and that it goes back to be one unified code once or if it's passed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, and Councilmember, thank you, Mayor Sidnor and City Solicitor. And Councilmember Mills, I think you have a comment or question as well?
Yes, yeah, when you see these codes in the paper, most, most times it's either like a half a page or could be a full page ad, you know.
All right, so would the council be comfortable with the original suggestion that City Solicitor Pulli made regarding for this one that we provide our input, our recommendations, and if we have more that we want to suggest, and it takes whatever time it needs to take than it does, and then for future ones, we've made the recommendation that they be separated. Is everyone comfortable with that? Councilmember Simmons?
Let me just inject one more thing. You guys are legislative reps. Whatever you guys want to do, we adjust, you know, just to, you know, you want to rewrite it, rewrite it for us, give it to us, we'll make, you know, we'll put it where you guys want it.
Thank you, Mayor Sidnor. And I believe CA Pulli said that as well. Councilmember Simmons, I think you had your hand up, and then I saw Councilwoman Johnson as well.
Are you the Councilwoman Johnson?
I just wanted to say, I guess, go through the process. I guess it's not, if we need to make adjustments, then we'll, again, move forward and make the adjustments that are needed. It doesn't need to be separated, but just want to make sure that we address the concerns that we have for each individual section.
Thank you, Councilwoman Johnson. Okay, so it sounds like sounds like everyone is comfortable for this one. Okay, Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, just to clarify, thank you, Madam President, for your indulgence. I think I agree with Councilwoman Johnson that if we're able to give the topics the adequate space they need to be explored and discussed, you know, I think I'm comfortable moving under one. You know, if maybe even at a future point, if it becomes apparent that it's, you know, we're holding up one thing to figure out something else, that could be the point at which we fork. My personal preference, it was all up to me, but my eyes will fork now, but I'm happy to go along with that process in the interest of collaboration.
Thank you, Councilmember Simmons. I agree as well. I think for this one, we're still able to provide our input and to ensure that it's it's allowed and added. However, I do have a slight concern about us adding to the budget that's spent that may not have been there for those advertisements. That's just in the back of my mind, and I think us providing that request now may allow the administration to kind of prepare for it in future requests or changes. So thank you so much for your input. Thank you, CA Pulli. I don't think she's here, she can't hear me. Oh, yes, she is, okay. Thank you for providing that that additional context, Mayor Sidnor and our city solicitor. So it sounds like, and I just want to clarify and confirm, that we will move forward with ordinance number two zero five zero being one. However, there are recommendations to make adjustments with concerns about overcrowding or taking out the line item regarding only having one, I want to make sure I say it correctly, only having one rental space or tourist area on a street. And with that additional change, and I know we have more questions that may come to the administration that can be added to ordinance number two zero five zero, either by the administration or and/or Councilmember Cole, then we're comfortable adding it to our October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and city council meeting. Do, are there any objections? I love working with y'all. Y'all so silent? Okay, perfect. So with no objections, no additional questions or comments, ordinance number two zero five zero will be placed on the October fifteenth virtual regular mayor and city council meeting for a first public hearing. Thank you, Deputy Director Monte Burrow. Thank you to Ms. Hamlet as well for answering those questions, and any questions that you will answer after today. Thank you in advance. We have now reached the end of our work session agenda. Please remember to save the date for our upcoming virtual regular meeting on October fifteenth at six P M. You can watch this on our City of Laurel website or on our Laurel TV, on our YouTube channel. And of course, to all of our federal employees, especially the ones living in Laurel, we are thanking of you. With no further business to come before the mayor and city council, this meeting is now adjourned at eight fourteen P M. Have a great night.